Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the work session business meeting of October 13th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the listed agenda items.
Can you make sure that you say who you are, please?
Good evening. For those of you who did not know me, my name is Jocelyn Kraus and I'm one of the band teachers at the middle school. I'm also here in my capacity as the president of the Putnam County Music Educators Association. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to speak with a number of our state legislators regarding Assembly Bill 1788 and companion Senate Bill S. 4525, both of which move music and arts education from regulatory to statutory status and brings New York in line with federal law. There's a New York State School Boards Association proposed resolution regarding this issue, which was on the agenda as Resolution 1, but I think I was informed they recently changed it to Resolution 10.
We're going to count it as one.
Yeah, it was number one. When the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESO, which I'm sure you're familiar with, was passed at the federal level in 2015, it included the well-rounded education provision that lists courses, activities, and programming, and subjects deemed critical when providing students a broad and enriched educational experience. The provision includes music and arts, which articulate the importance of music as a part of every child's education. The current New York State resolution would align New York State law with this federal law. New York State has always been a leader in the country for their support of music and arts education. Music in Our Schools Month started in New York. Our state music association is the largest and most successful in the country, and we consistently put on a variety of festivals and student performances that are of a professional caliber. Additionally, Putnam Valley has routinely been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education recognition, and I believe our school and community support for music and the arts put us in the perfect place to be leaders in our support for this important proposal. I truly feel privileged to be a music teacher in Putnam Valley. My students have access to a number of music opportunities, and I love seeing them flourish and succeed in a creative and expressive musical capacity. The joy, determination, and teamwork I see from my students on a daily basis is unlike any I have seen in any of the other subject areas that I teach. Music is truly an essential part of every student's education, and in Putnam Valley, we can continue our support for every student's music and arts education by supporting Resolution number one or 10. The resolution provides both the state and our district the opportunity to support a proposal that in many senses is symbolic, as it merely follows federal guidelines, but allows us to continue our leadership in the area of music and the arts. I know we can count on the Putnam Valley Board, as well as school boards throughout the state, to codify music and arts as a part of every student's well-rounded education. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Are there any other public comments? Does the board have anything you want to?
I'm not commenting yet.
Okay. And you're going to stay for a while so that when we get to that point, if we have a question for you, we can ask you?
So, sorry, I'm going to speak real fast to Jocelyn's because I don't get the vote anyway. Thank you for coming to speak. I think it's very important to hear directly from Putnam Valley teachers about these important topics. And I know I speak for the board and how appreciative and honored they are to have the music educators we have here in Putnam Valley. So I think to your point, it doesn't really change anything here in Putnam Valley in terms of what we offer and how we treat music, but I think it's unfortunate there are some schools across the state that don't have a comprehensive music education or art education program from their elementary school all the way through. And it's my belief that by making it a core subject area, that that would ensure that all students across New York State have the same opportunity and exposure to music and art as those students in Putnam Valley already have. So I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to come here and speak. Thanks.
Okay, so we will move to the consent agenda.
The resolve to approve the consent agenda items two through 10 is presented to the board of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Blino?
Sure. The consent agenda includes approval of minutes from the last board meeting, additional work hours for various staff members, an updated 22-23 substitute listing, authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into agreement with a school for a classified student, approval of three school buses which have mechanical and rust issues and which no longer have any value to the district. We are having a change to the in-service credit document that was approved at a prior meeting. We're amending the appointment of a teaching assistant who was appointed in the role of a substitute but has now completed the process to become a certified teaching assistant. We're appointing the high school and middle school student activities treasurers for the upcoming, for the school year. And we're accepting the 2022 annual report for storm water management program. I have a little blurb if you'd like me to read it about what that is. This is a state-mandated annual storm water management report. The state asks that we report on public education and outreach about storm waters' best management practices. The district satisfies this requirement through the storm water management page on our website. We also have a storm water management team that meets annually. It includes the grounds and custodial workers, a high school science teacher, the storm water management consultant who eventually does prepare this and submits this plan himself, and Mr. Spittle. They discuss best practices for environmentally sound storm water management, and they monitor for illicit discharges.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. So we're moving into presentations.
All right. Our first presentation this evening will be our middle school presentation. So I'd like to invite out Mr. McCarty and Ms. Jamie Zeca.
Please make sure you introduce yourself.
My name is Travis McCarty. I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School, and I am here with our new assistant principal, Ms. Jamie Zeca. Welcome, Jamie. So I'm here to present on Putnam Valley Middle School's opening of school report for our 2022-2023 school year. And a couple of our goals/themes for the year are aspiring and to be empowered. And you'll see that theme run through our presentation. So for those of you that aren't aware, our school was built in 1972, so it is our 50th anniversary. And we are here to celebrate this year by hopefully putting on a couple of events to recognize 50 years. Our middle school has come a long way from what I'm told it originally looked like. If you've had a chance to walk through our hallways or look at our outside facade, it's grown tremendously in the last 20 years since I've been there. So we're hoping to get our alumni involved. We've already expressed interest from our building steering committee. Our PTA and education foundation have always been supportive with various events in our middle school, our student council hearing organically from our students. And our 50th day of the school year is actually coming up as Friday, November 18th. So any alumni that are out there who have interest in ideas along with our students or anyone in any other capacity, there's a couple tidbits up there from 1972. I wasn't born at that time, so I'm not aware of all of this, but really, I'm aware of a lot of that, but again, I wasn't born yet.
I'm always confused, who thought brown was a good color for a car?
It's coming back, Dr. Luft. It's coming back. So any interest out there, please contact me. I'd be happy to hear your ideas. So I just want to talk a little bit about, we in presentation mode? Hold on. Thank you, Dan. So for those of you that aren't aware, we've now successfully started the last few years on a staggered start, which has been tremendous for our fifth and sixth grade students coming in. So on September 1st, we brought in our fifth and sixth graders, which is nice because our building's at half-capacity. So our fifth graders were able to get oriented to the building. They were able to walk up to their classrooms. They have their lockers in their very own classrooms, and teachers were able to walk them to the dining hall and various other classrooms that they might not yet become familiar with. Our sixth graders were also in on this day. They were able to open their lockers, which can be something they get really quickly or something that takes about a month or so to get used to. So it's nice not having everybody crowded around them. They get acclimated to the locker opening process and see the building as well at half-capacity. Our new students in seventh and eighth grade came in the afternoon to find their lockers, open their lockers, and their seventh and eighth grade teachers helped assist them with that process. And just so you all are aware, we had a fifth-grade parent orientation that morning at 8:00 a.m., so it was heavily attended, and the parents got to hear about the processes of the middle school. And as I always say, if they have questions about the middle school, please call the middle school and we can provide them with the correct information. So very well attended. We appreciate that partnership from those fifth-grade families, and they can continue to reach out if they have questions. But been a very smooth transition for our fifth graders, as well as the rest of the building. All smiles, and you'll see from this presentation. So looking back at 2021-2022, it was a very eventful year. There's quite a number of activities that you'll see up there on the board. It looks much brighter on my screen, but we did have an eighth-grade ice cream social. The education foundation had their color run, which I know is coming up soon, actually. We had our winter and spring band and chorus concerts. Our author visit, Rob Bouyer, who is the author of Because of Mr. Turep, which was a PTA-sponsored book for our fifth and sixth graders. He was tremendous in just talking about a lot of the novels that he's written in addition to this, to inspire our future writers. We had guest speaker Mark Marrow, who actually I just spoke during our listening hour. What a powerful speaker. He spoke to our seventh and eighth graders about the choices he's made and the struggle through his life. He was a pro wrestler who lost a lot of colleagues to overdoses and tragedies in their life, and he listed and spoke about how his journey has led him to present to schools in helping kids make good choices moving forward. We had our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony in our middle school, which makes us very proud up on our stage. Student-staff events, so we had our student-staff Olympics, our student-versus-staff volleyball game, music bingo, and hot chocolate event. Our fifth grade went to Sharp Reservation, and we had our two-by-two Animal Haven visit. And again, I'm listing all these, and I'll talk to the pictures on the side. No-name-calling week, Red Ribbon Week, First Annual First Responder and Equipment Apparatus Event was a highlight for the year, Scholastic Book Fairs, Dress Theme Wednesdays and Spirit Fridays, Spring Fling Talent Show put on by our student council, and our IB Long Beach Visit and Clearwater Visits by our staff. And lastly, but not least, our Moving Up Ceremony and Moving Up Dance. So although we started the year with masks, we ended the year without masks or a choice, but look at all the events we were able to put on. I remember moving up to the Halloween Bash, the weekend was approaching, and COVID cases were rising, and we made the executive decision to cancel it, and our student council was disappointed, but look at all the events we were able to put on by the end of the year. So if that was the one thing we had to cancel, that wasn't bad compared to the year before. So you'll notice here a couple of pictures, our fifth graders at Sharp Reservation up in Fishkill, and to the right, that was our food drive. What an amazing accomplishment from our entire school with regard to that food drive. So I do want to talk a little bit about how our students are doing academically. And you'll see here, these are our I-ready scores in the area of reading. So for those of you that aren't aware, we take a universal screener for our school in September, in February, and then again in May. So this shows us a comparison by grade levels. If you look at the top, that's grade five in September. We had 38% proficient. And then if you scroll down a little bit and you look here, we moved up to 62%. Grade six, we started the year with 34% proficient in reading. We moved up to 58%. Grade seven, we went from 47% proficient to 51% proficient. And grade eight, we went from 36% proficient to 47% proficient. So this was one growth measure that we used. We use multiple measures to really chart growth for our students, but this is one that we do yearly, again in September, February, and May. So this is our math diagnostic results. Starting in grade five, we go from 30% coming in in September to 72% in May. Sixth grade started the year at 26% to 69% in May. Seventh, 46% to 50% in May. And eighth grade started the year at 28% to 44% in May. So growth across the board, and our goal is always to see our children progress throughout the school year. So I always say, the more green, the better, and we can always chart that year to year. And actually, students start taking the I-ready as third graders. So three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So by the time they get to us in these grades, they're familiar with the program, so it makes that easier on us. So we started our school year with a building-level community meeting. This is the first time in four years that we've been able to bring the entire school together in our pack. And you'll see Ms. Zeca is all smiles. We put her in front of the whole school that day, and this was like her fifth day. So I was like, you've got this. And she did wonderful up there. You know, we have 480 students and 60 staff members in the pack, and I have to tell you how respectful our students are, how welcoming, all smiles. They clapped appropriately, they stopped appropriately, and it's always interesting, you know, it's always a competition with the grade-level teachers going up fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, specials, teachers, teaching assistants. It's everyone. It's really a nice chance to say to everyone, we are your support system. If you have questions, comments, concerns, look at everybody in that space. We are here to help you. We're here to guide you along your way. So very powerful way to start the year. And then we went over expectations of the building, which a lot of our, all of our teachers reinforce in their very own classrooms. So all smiles across the board. It's hard to really pan out to see how powerful it is to have close to 550 people in that space, but it's a beautiful community event. So probably about three weeks later, we had our student government elections, and I want to put out a great thank you to our two advisors, Ms. Diaz and Mrs. Riley. The turnout that we get from the student body is tremendous. So basically, we start the school year off, and we say, do you want to represent your grade level? Do you want to represent your building? And we had a number of students, you'll see in the lower left-hand corner here, come out and say, sure, I'd like to give a speech in front of 500 people. I'd like to talk about a platform that I'm going to run on. I want to talk about improvements to the middle school. And then we're like, okay, create a speech, create posters, and run on that platform. And what was unique this year, and it really brings a smile to my face, is one boy was passing out stickers that said, "Elect me," or "Vote for me." And it was the first I had seen it, but I thought it was very unique, very powerful. And, you know, we list our representatives down the right-hand side, and I'm not going to read all their names, but I will tell you, we're so proud of every single one of them standing up and giving a speech, because I can stand up before you. It's very different standing up before all their peers. And they were well-spoken, well-written, and spoke to their heart in representing their grade level. So thank you to our advisors. And the nice thing about our student government process is, even though you're not elected to a position, those other students and anyone on each grade level can join student council. So they can go to student council meetings, they can plan for our Halloween Bash, our 50th anniversary event, our food drive, our Spring Fling, and our talent show, just to name a few. And we're always looking to expand on events and opportunities for those kids.
So being a parent of a middle schooler, which ones ran on a no homework campaign? I feel like that. That's a shoo-in.
That is a shoo-in. So clubs. I'm surprised how dim this is, because it looks brighter on my computer, and I apologize for that.
It's nice and bright on those watching online.
All right, good. We have a number of clubs running within our school, but I just wanted to speak to some that have ceased to have run, and then some that have been proposals from our students, because we always want to promote student advocacy. So during that community meeting, we talked about all the options that kids have, and we said, oh, and by the way, some clubs have started because students are interested and they need to come to administration and find an advisor, and we will think about starting your club moving forward. And what I really meant was next year, when the next budget season rolls around. But some of the past clubs that have existed, and this is just to name a few, were Board Game Club, Dance Club, Forensics Club, Knitting Club, Mural Club, and Take Five and Yoga Club. So we're sorry to see those go due to low interest or other reasons, but wouldn't you know? My own daughter included approached me to say, can we start a cheerleading club? And we kind of have to pump the brakes a little bit and wait till the next budget season, but they already found an advisor that might be interested in running it. So that is student advocacy at the best, right there. And then, of course, Chess Club keeps coming up year after year, but the kids do play chess during our recess time in our learning commons. Actually, there's a couple of seventh-grade kids that I wouldn't compete against because they are gamers. They are impressive at the game of chess. So you'll see a number of clubs here. I'm not going to name them all, but one of the new clubs this year is Newspaper Club, run by Mrs. Heikowski. And I'll tell you, this started because about six, sixth graders came to her last year after her creative writing course and said, can we start a newspaper club? And they found more kids to join, and we said absolutely, because we had put that on pause for a few years, and now we're running it. And it's awesome. It's awesome to see that kids coming to adults with ideas. And by the way, you'll notice up here, oops, I'll go back. Up here is our Intramural Club, which started this week. That's a very highly-attended club, meets in the mornings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 7:00 a.m. And then here, this is Go Green Club from last year. They actually decorated birdhouses and put them out on the wellness trail. So Ms. Levarnway is looking forward to starting. She actually started Go Green Club this afternoon. So I know they're hiking Granum Mountain coming up soon. All these, all these opportunities for our kids. And if they try a club out and it's not for them, that's okay. If they didn't start the first day the club met, that's okay as well. Parents, you can go online to our website and sign your kids up for as many clubs as you'd like. Unfortunately, there are conflicts on occasion with sports and such, so they do have to make a choice on those days. That's a little better. Ongoing opportunities and events. We did hold our fifth and sixth grade back-to-school night, as well as our seventh and eighth grade back-to-school night. These two evenings were extremely well-attended. It was nice to see parents back in the building. In fact, during the initial presentation that Mrs. Zeca and I, she had a, we had a little coffee break where it was a meet-and-greet, which was nice. She got to walk around and meet the parents and guardians. It was standing room only. So with our fifth and sixth grade parents in the dining hall, which is a third of the size bigger than it used to be, they could only stand, and we had set up 120 chairs. So really great turnout. And then seventh and eighth grade evening, a little less, but still well-attended. Our parent meetings have started for the school year, and for those of you that already know this, we don't have formal parent-teacher back-to-school nights, where you have parent-teacher conferences, I should say. So please reach out to your grade-level team leader or your teacher to schedule meetings. We can do it all year. We always say, come in, tell us about your child. We love to provide you feedback, and I encourage all parents to reach out, just to come in and say, you know, this is who my child is, a learner, this is what I'm seeing, and so on. I think that face-to-face communication is always key. Emails, sometimes, they're hard to read, so a phone conversation or an in-person meeting does go a long way. Our Wednesday dress themes and Friday spirit days are in full tilt. I wore my Yankees jersey yesterday. And I know that our student government has marked every one Wednesday of each month as a dress-themed day, and they're looking for ideas, looking forward to their 70s Day. So those are in full tilt, and Fridays are spirit days, so we see a lot of students wearing their athletic gear or their PV gear as well. Student of the Month breakfast this year will start next month, and just know that we are inviting parents in to have breakfast with our children and to see them receive their certificates for Student of the Month. Many encore class opportunities available as well. Capstone Research has a choice in seventh grade. We're hoping to expand that to other grades hopefully next year. And I just added up here, our encore offerings of textiles and design in fifth and sixth grade. If you look closely, you'll see the kids making pillows. So they're actually cutting with scissors, they're sewing, they're stuffing those pillows and bringing them home. No laptops involved. So it's a tangible moment for our kids, and when they bring those pillows home, they're so proud of what they've made. So there's a lot to be said for our textiles and design classes. And thank you to Mrs. Petrillo and for running this class for us, and Mrs. McCormick. So just smiles across the board. You'll see here, a lot of these are from our first week of school. In the upper-left-hand corner, that's a sixth-grade class. Upper-right-hand corner, that's a few of our eighth-grade boys. Bottom left, a couple of our eighth-grade girls, and bottom right is a fifth-grade class. All smiles, happy to see each other in our hallways and in our classrooms. So some of our ongoing work, and a lot of our community members from our middle school should have received a letter from the middle school on Friday with regard to some of these topics. Data-driven instruction, so we're looking at the data that we receive from New York State Assessments, our I-ready assessments, and our in-class benchmarks. And now in fifth grade, we're currently in the process of giving DRAs for our students to identify what are our students' areas of strength. for our students to identify what are our students' areas of strength? What are some areas in which we can grow? So, one of the things that we've done for a number of years now is in 5th and 6th grade during IE classes, they take two days of-
Mr. Party, I'm sorry, I need to stop you, only because there's a lot of abbreviation salad here. If you could, when, when you say it the first time, say what they are, what DRA means, what IE, all those things. MTSS, just let people know who are watching what those mean, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, so, our New York State Assessments being our reading and our math assessments that are given once a year. Um, our iReady benchmarks, which I spoke of, um, which are, uh, given three times a year. And then DRA is Direct Reading Assessment. In a sense, it's, it's a way for guided reading to know what levels they're on, which are already given in the elementary school. So, this is the first time in a number of years, or since I can remember, um, that we are providing it in 5th grade. Okay? So, it's an assessment to know where they are and what level they're on. Um, and then localized assessments. So, IE period is Intervention and Enrichment. So, this is a period throughout our school day in which students are pulled for Academic Intervention Services, uh, for reading and for math. They are also pulled for lessons or OTPT, um, services. Physical therapy, speech.
See, see what I'm saying?
Gotcha. Wait till we get to the IB and the number of acronyms. Um, so, this is a period of the day in which our students, um, are enriched or they receive intervention services. And what's so important here is, for some time now, in 5th and 6th grade, um, our students have received two days of reading instruction, um, through iReady instruction on their computer. So, what it does is it takes their benchmark and the areas that they need to grow, and it gives them computer instruction in those areas so they practice. Um, and their grade-level teachers can look at how they're doing and reset it and check their progress and assign them more or less, and conference with them. So, we have two days of that in reading, and we have two days of that in math in 5th and 6th grade. We're hoping to grow that into 7th and 8th grade soon, and do one day of reading and one day of math, so that our students can see the connection between the benchmarks throughout the year. So, what's happened historically is, they sit in September, they take the benchmark, they sit again in February, they take it, and then they sit a third time in May and take it, and they don't really see that connection. So, now, weekly, they will be receiving online instruction in the areas that they can grow, but also keep in mind, they will have opportunities to check in with their teachers for help, they will have opportunities to complete homework, um, they will have opportunities to read, so it's not just sitting five days a week taking iReady instruction. And that's kind of the point of the letter that I sent home last week, is to help parents understand that this is not a huge change. Actually, for 7th graders, it's, it's a minor change from what they did last year. For 8th graders, it is a little bit of change, because they haven't done this since 6th grade. Now, also, mind you, this is where students can chart their own progress, so they actually keep track of their progress electronically, so they can see themselves grow. And how important is that, that they kind of keep track of their own strengths and areas for growth? And then the teachers can check in with them with regard to that. The next, uh, topic is multi-tiered systems of support. And this is where academic intervention services teachers and our core teachers, which is math, science, social studies, and ELA, they work together, um, to provide a program to meet the needs of all learners. And I will talk more about MTSS in a minute, because it's a school-wide, um, really goal of ours to work. It's an umbrella that involves the whole child. SEL, meaning Social and Emotional Learning, I guess I could have written all this up here, um, is connecting students with their peers and their teachers, right? So, um, it's looking at, we, we all know that a child who sits in front of you, if they don't feel safe or welcomed and not connected, they are never going to access their academics. So, we want to make sure that our student support team, who is our psychologist, um, our social worker, and our school counselor, we meet weekly to discuss children. So, every Thursday, we meet for 40 minutes to talk about students that have come up on our radar and really triage and, and talk about plans to, um, mediate and to welcome them back into the environment, should there be, um, consequences based on choices and such. And lastly, uh, targeted reading and writing instruction. So, guided reading beginning in 5th grade, um, which is a bit of a change, um, as well as writing revolution work that continues to grow, um, from years past. So, this is our, uh, multi-tiered system of supports. Um, so you'll notice, uh, it all weaves together. So, we look at the academic piece, um, where we meet every other week with grade-level teams to discuss grades and how students are doing in classrooms. The behavioral piece, which we talked, um, we're going to be pulling our disciplinary records quarterly to talk about who are students who are going in for consequences and more so the why. Like, what's, why are they going in? Is it for work completion? Is it for behavior? Um, is it for other choices that they make? So, we will look at those behavior records. Um, and then the social-emotional, right? So, how are they doing mentally within our building? And it all ties together, and we've created this document to go over with, um, all of our staff members in the middle school to see if we can add or take away, so that we're transparent through the process. It's very in-depth. So, for those of you that, uh, aren't aware, it's the first year that we've been able to bring all of our students together for lunch and recess. Um, this has been something I feel like has been coming for the last three to four years. But with our very large dining hall, um, every single 5th grader eats together. Every single 6th grader, 7th and 8th grader eat together. So, on the grade level, they can all eat together. And then they have three choices, um, for their second 20 minutes of that time. And that is, one, our makerspace, um, which you'll see here. We have, uh, books and projects in which kids design. Um, I say this is like Legos, but beyond. There are motors, there's wires, there's wrenches, there's, uh, cutters. Um, and this is all monitored by staff members during that time. Don't worry, we don't send kids in there alone, um, so that they can get feedback on the process. I always say, this is kind of like shop, but it's not a true shop class. They also have the choice to go to the Learning Commons. So, in our Learning Commons, uh, you'll see kids here with dominos, playing cards, um, playing chess, checkers, Monopoly, Connect Four, and of course, reading. So, we've been very lucky this year. Um, we have Mrs. Riley in the space during various periods, and actually, the entire 5th grade visited and checked out books this week. Um, and we hope to continue to grow that through the other grade levels. Our goal is to have every child in the middle school with a book, um, at all times. And then the third choice is, of course, recess. So, they're outside on the turf, on inclement weather days, they're in our gymnasium. So, we do want to talk a little bit about middle school enrollment. Um, we do continue to see a, a trend of decreased enrollment, but I think that was projected many years ago. Um, we do see the same number of students in Grade 5 as we do in Grade 6, at 111 students at each grade level. Our largest group is actually currently in 7th grade, we're at 132. And our second-largest group is in 8th grade at 125. Now, I did put down below, um, a little bit of our current numbers in the elementary school, just so that you see what could be coming to us. Um, so, there are currently 81 students in 4th grade. So, that's a bit of a smaller grade coming up next year, that will be 5th graders. But that's okay, because the following year, their current 3rd grade is at 132. Um, so they match our biggest grade in the building. And then the year after, which they stay pretty close, these are our 2nd graders, um, they're at 127. So, we see those numbers come back up to the healthy 132, high 120s. So, I just wanted to give you that, because I know we, we've seen a reduction in our class sizes a little bit. Um, but then we will start to see that grow a little bit. And those students will eventually be going into the high school as well. So, some of our growing programs at the middle school. Um, our Algebra I Regents course, um, we currently have 49 students, um, which is a very healthy number, that's two sections. Um, capstone research in 7th grade, and like I said before, we're hoping to expand capstone research as a choice, um, next year in other grade levels. Mandarin Chinese, um, Mrs. Sharon Lum, this is the first year that she is the sole Mandarin teacher in person. So, it's no longer a remote program, it's an in-person program, um, for those two sections. And I know she was a teaching assistant last year, um, to the remote program, which was nice to have her in that space, but now she is the sole Mandarin teacher for those two classes. Our Math 7A, uh, for our 7th graders is at two sections with 52 students currently. And our Science 21 program, which continues to grow in 5th grade. Last year, it was piloted, the NGSS, in one of the cohorts. It is now in three sections, um, with a lot of great feedback, um, from our teachers. Actually sat in on a wonderful, um, Science 21 lesson today. And our ENL program. So, when I started, um, 19 years ago, we had one ENL teacher for the entire district. We currently have four plus. Um, I didn't do the math for how many point positions exist, but, uh, four plus. And we are very lucky to have Mrs. Lum, Mrs. Metans, and Miss Trainer, um, assisting our students at the middle school. And you'll see here, um, they're using home language supports to understand a text. Here, they're writing, um, newcomers writing sentences about different types of weather. And here, speaking, um, figuring out figurative language, which is hard for native English speakers. Um, so, that is a challenge, figurative language. So, we have a growing ENL program with 28 students, and it continues to grow. And, uh, we appreciate all that our teachers do to support our ENL learners. So, continued community-building, um, activities. Next week, we do have our PTA Scholastic Book Fair that will run Tuesday through Thursday. Um, and that will run during our lunch and recess periods. We will, uh, spread things out in our Learning Commons, and kids can come in and put their hands on books. So, please send your children in with money. They can put those books on hold through the end of the day on Thursday. Picture Day, Dress for Success, Dress Your Best, that will be next Friday, and there will be a makeup day, um, further on in the year. Our 2022 National Red Ribbon Week, um, will take place the week after, um, the week of 10/24. And that will be kicked off over here on the right. You'll see, um, there's a BMX, um, biking event that will take place in our gymnasium about making healthy choices. Um, and then that Wednesday is our Second Annual First Responder and Equipment and Apparatus Event. That will take place during all of our lunch and recess periods, starting at 10:00 a.m., in our parking lot. Um, and I want to thank, thank the first responders, um, in advance that are coming. Um, nothing that brings smiles to students' faces when seeing heavy equipment, police officers, firefighters, um, and first responders. It's just outstanding. Um, I know Dr. Love spoke a little bit during our listening hour. Kids get to work the robot, kids get to put the gears on, the gear on. They, last year, they got to touch the helicopter. Um, so, really neat event. Um, our Halloween Bash is scheduled for Thursday, the 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And just so everyone's aware, we did have to move that from the Friday to the Thursday, because Friday is actually the homecoming football, um, game. And it's very heavy with traffic on this campus. Um, so we did move it to Thursday, our apologies for those that are typically used to that on a Friday. Don't worry, we, we'll still have Halloween on the 31st, I promise. Um, so, kids can dress up on Halloween at the middle school, um, appropriately, of course. So, um, the last item that I want to talk about here is our Spring Career Fair. Um, so, this is being led by our school counselor, Ms. Kendall Coleman. And she's already sent out a connect ed, which we will send out at least two more times to community members that would like to come in the spring to show off what they do for a living. What unique career do you have that you'd like to share with middle school students? And we really take great pride in doing career inventories for our students as they go all the way up through the high school, um, and then decide what they want to do for a living. Um, so, anyone that has a unique career, or any career, that would like to come in and share with our students, that will take place in our Health and Wellness Center in the spring. And I think the deadline is December 2nd, so please respond to that email. Currently, we have seven people that want to come in. We'd love to have 70. Um, the more, the merrier, so that kids get an opportunity to really see what unique careers exist out there.
I just want to emphasize, that is the official sales pitch. All right, we have seven signed up, and we certainly would like to welcome many more of our parents and community members to come in and showcase what they do for a living for our students and give our students a true glimpse of the wide range of talent that exists across Putnam Valley. So, uh, if you have not done so already, please consider, uh, taking the time and signing up to present what you do, uh, to the students of Putnam Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Love. Um, so during Red Ribbon Week, you'll see here, um, the first day is Wear Red. Ready to Say No to Drugs. Uh, Tuesday is Pyjama Day, We Dream of Life Without Drugs. Wednesday is our Superhero Day. What better day to dress up as a superhero and have our, um, emergency responders being in our parking lot? Because they are our true super, superheroes. Um, Thursday is Sport Team Day. Um, Friday is SPV Spirit Day, and then, of course, Monday's Halloween. So, that is, uh, Costume Day, scare away drugs. So, the next topic, uh, we'd like to update the community on is becoming an IB school. So, IB meaning International Baccalaureate. Um, and when you hear me say MYP, that is the Middle Years Program. And for those of you that aren't aware, um, becoming an IB MYP school is a sophisticated process that is ongoing. And we started this work last year with our staff members. And you'll see in some of these pictures how these students are collaborating. Um, and some of the work that you'll see up there is interdisciplinary and led by, um, a framework. And that is, that is our goal amongst many other pieces to IB. Um, but when we speak to the middle school, technically, IB runs in Grades 6 through 10, the IB MYP. We are going to start with 5 through 8, and then eventually, we'll see where that takes us. But 5, Grade 5, is considered Year 0. Grade 6 is considered Year 1. Grade 7 is considered Year 2, and Grade 8 is considered Year 3. So, I promise I won't quiz you on that, um, just in case we start talking about Year 0, 1, 2, and 3. So, where are we with regards to our IB Middle Years Program? As I spoke earlier, um, we, we did go on a couple visits last year, um, one to Long Beach Middle School, and I would just want to thank them for inviting us in. I know it's not easy during a year of COVID to go visit a school. Um, they were tremendously, uh, welcoming, and we saw quite a bit of interdisciplinary work throughout our journey in their school. And then, of course, we took a, a small number of people to Clearwater, um, to learn more about, um, IB as a whole. So, a little bit of the work that we've started is looking at the learner profile. So, there are 10 attributes, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, we've recently completed our Intent to Apply. We've recently completed our intent to apply, so that's letting them know that, hey, we intend to apply, let's get the ball rolling. And more in-depth part of the process now is developing the electronic application, which is letting IB know what the demographics of our school are, what is our plagiarism policy, what is our mission and vision, what is our enrollment, what does our current schedule look like, what does our community look like? So we've leaned on a bunch of different people and resources to help start filling out this application, and our goal is to have this complete in the next upcoming month or two, if not sooner. We've utilized our PD after-school hours, so we have one hour a month with our staff with regard to activities. And our Superintendent's Conference Days partially have been reserved for professional learning. Our goal is to launch a major training, it's about six hours, on March tenth of 2023, which is a Superintendent's Conference Day. And I do want to thank Mrs. Jackie Levine for her work in helping us grow with this, because we hear about the high school, right, and our diploma program. But although this is a foundation for that, the diploma program looks very different from the Middle Years Program. The Middle Years Program, it touches every single student in the building in one way or another, there's a community project, there is learning, the learner profile, and then there's approaches to learning. And there are a number of other acronyms that we will come across that I haven't fully learned yet, but I look forward to sharing that as we go through, so we'll have more on that as the year progresses. So this is one of our conference days where our staff members are illustrating and describing what the ten learner profile attributes mean to them, and I still have these posters. So they took these right here, and they illustrated what inquirers mean to them. What does knowledgeable mean? Thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, balanced, and reflective. So these are the attributes of the whole child, and this is something that we hope to not only post in every classroom and space within the middle school, but these are attributes that we want to instill in all of our children. So when we make choices, are we thinking about these in what we do? And that's going to be a lot of our work, which is uncovering what our curriculum looks like, how are we aligned with each other in our framework and a common language? And of course, the community aspect with how are we branching out to the community to bring the community into the school and the school out to the community? What can we do to better our world? And that's what makes it an international baccalaureate program. How do we branch outside of Putnam Valley Middle School and connect our kids in a more worldly basis? So I know there's a lot up there, but that's our ongoing work with IB. This was a fifth-grade activity that I witnessed recently, and we have posted on our website. So if you want to see a journey of our kids throughout the school year, you just have to go to our website, and there's a Google Photos page, and it's kind of like a photo timeline of our kids throughout the year. The most recent are at the top. If you want to see the first day of school, go to the bottom, and it's powerful. They say a picture's worth a thousand words. Take a look at your kids, it's really powerful. And I want to thank you to all of our teachers and Mrs. Sherwood for creating this page, because it's really nice to see our kids in action. Any questions?
Training begins March tenth, twenty-twenty-three, you said, for the IB, the Middle School Year Program. When will it be fully implemented, do you believe, Travis? Or will it be fully implemented?
Good, just wait for everyone to leave, it's going to be loud on the mic. Good night, all.
I don't know what they mean.
So that's a great question. I believe it takes up to three years to get the accreditation, where they would then send a committee in to give us feedback on how we're doing, but we will have assistance throughout the process, and we will pose many questions like, hey, we're doing this here, we're doing this here, can you give us feedback on that? So it is a process, which includes a coordinator, working with teachers, administrators, working with teachers, and we want to make sure that our staff is comfortable, so that then our children can be comfortable with the process.
So it's not something that's going to happen overnight, for sure.
Okay. Time and patience.
Because I had some parents ask about the IB, you know, the Middle Year Program, and I said, I believe, I said, I'm not all that knowledgeable, but I truly believe it's going to be a prolonged process to really get that up and running.
It will be an ongoing process. We will be sure to have parents involved, we will have parent nights, we will be transparent, and I've had many conversations with community members in explaining what I know thus far with the process, but what I can summarize the IB MYP is it's good teaching. It's a framework, it's interdisciplinary, and it's a common language, and we can only benefit from that.
Agreed. Thank you.
So I just want to provide some more information there. One, just to clarify, while March is going to be sort of the formal training where an IB representative from IB will be coming in and working with our teachers, that work is already begun, right? So our focus throughout the entire school year will be IB-focused. So grade levels and Superintendent's Conference Days and after-school professional development sessions, many of those are already geared towards the work that needs to happen in preparation for what will be that initial training that takes place in March. So I don't want it to be lost that we're not waiting for the March training to begin to work, the work is already begun.
Understood.
Yeah. And then the other piece is, I mean, realistically, it's a three- to four-year phase-in period, and that's what we expect it to be in order to receive authorization, and then obviously the work continues, but a realistic timeline for the middle school is three to four years. And then near the end of that is when we expect the high school to come on board as well for ninth and tenth graders. So you're looking at maybe a five-year process by the time it's fully in six through, or really five through ten, in terms of implementing the program. There'll be two separate authorizations, the middle school and the high school will be separate, they're not connected, so the middle school can receive authorization before the high school, but that's sort of what our timeline is. And as I've explained to the teachers and parents, that this September really marched the starting line, right? That was our start to this work, and the finish line is somewhere three, four years down the line. By the time we have enough of it in place, speaking the language, mirroring what they want to see in order to have them come in, they physically send individuals here to visit our site, they observe classes, they do focus groups, maybe teachers, maybe parents, maybe administrators, so it's a really intensive process, and anyone who was involved in the middle, in the high school authorization process knows how intensive of a process it is. So really, realistically, three to four years down the line is when we'll be inviting those individuals in and seeking our authorization.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for bringing this to the middle school, because this is all about metacognition, and particularly at this age, they're so ready for it.
Thank you, it's my pleasure. It's nice to have a goal to work towards, which we have yearly, but I think this is something that will unite every staff member and every child in the middle school, and I'm looking forward to it.
I have a number of questions, but I'll let other people go first.
Can we go back to slide eight, nine, the iReady? Especially seventh grade.
Thank you.
There doesn't seem, seventh grade, to be as much progression as there has been in the other grades, can you talk to that?
Sure. So in speaking with seventh grade, I know that one of the things that we've identified this year is Mrs. Zeca and I meeting with all of our professionals in those grades and just talking about aligning to our standards. And also, we need to realize that there is a big jump in time from sixth grade to seventh grade, so they are technically receiving, now on paper, receiving an hour of instruction in math and reading in fifth and sixth grade daily. But because of schedules and foreign language now being integrated into seventh and eighth grade, they now have a forty-minute time slot in their day for a foreign language. So that, even though, and Dr. Love is well aware of this, we spent a lot of time working on our schedule, so we have thirty percent more time with our seventh and eighth grade students, but it still equates to less time on that core subject. So it averages out to being fifty minutes every two days, where in fifth and sixth grade, it's sixty minutes every day. So there is a time difference, and we're also talking about now, you heard me speak earlier, one day a week for reading iReady instruction, and one day a week for math iReady instruction. So I think that's going to be only beneficial to our kids, because like I said, this is something that kind of was a standalone. You take the benchmark in September, you take it in February, you take it in May, and that's it. So what's connected, and with iReady, it's one of those online programs that is different for all the kids, so they weren't really practicing it so much in between those benchmarks, but now we will be. So that's what I kind of equate that growth to. I'm sure there may be other variables, but that was one that stood out to us as a staff, and is what we're going to look forward to seeing a change with looking at that instructional piece, kids monitoring their own progress, and teachers looking at that monitor, monitoring piece.
Do parents have the opportunity to monitor?
That's a good question. There is a parent portal, but you really want to sit down and have that discussion with the parents, so we do send home the report once a year. We actually send it home in their June report card, so they get a printout of their growth once a year. But it's a great question. I could ask iReady if they could go in and read the portal, I'm sure there's that opportunity, but I think the powerful piece is explaining it to them.
So there does seem to be opportunity in that grade. The Capstone Research, I didn't see a number of students in that course right now noted in your slide, do you know offhand?
It's an option for our seventh graders, so they either have the option to take technology or they have the option to take Capstone Research. I will tell you, it's spread over six days, and the average class size is ten to fifteen over those six days, so it's a nice one-to-one opportunity at smaller class size with regard to research. So I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I could get it for you for sure.
I was just curious on that. I know last year you had thirty-two, so I was just curious how you made it this year.
And last year it only ran for half the year. This year, we have a healthy run for the entire year, but I can definitely, I can tell you it's more than thirty-two, for certain.
I will have a question for Mrs. Zeca after Joe's done.
Sure.
I have follow-ups from what you were just talking about. On the iReady, the dirty laundry on the iReady, I'd love to get a little more insight into the challenges of the eighth-grade proficiencies, as compared to others. I know you've already mentioned there is less time for, when I'm looking particularly now at the math, but I guess the same thing would be true with the English, but the, just the proficiency levels being that much lower, even though there is growth between the fall and the spring, even with the spring, the numbers are less than stellar, and the numbers, particularly in eighth grade on both English and math, are in the twenties for whatever the actual red hashed mark actually means, I'm assuming it's what would be the lowest number. I just kind of want to get an idea, because now all these eighth graders and ninth grade, right? So I know it's somebody else's problem now, but at the same time, we need to be providing, providing for the next level for the growth, especially if they're going to be jumping into kind of a brand-new model where there's always that transition from eighth to ninth can be a struggle. I just really want to get a more of a sense on those high numbers on the not meeting those expectations.
So I can speak to that a little bit. Actually, when you look up there and you see the green with the diagonal lines, those are students above grade level. The green are students on grade level, the yellow are students approaching, the red is one grade level below, and the red with the diagonal are more than one grade level below. So what we're, what we're doing as a data team, part of our data-driven instruction, is we're meeting with our departments to look at specific skills that the kids are struggling in. So typically, anybody in your red or lower yellow are receiving intervention services or tier-one interventions in the classroom. So we've identified those students, not just iReady, we use multiple measures, so iReady, New York State Assessments, classroom scores, we identify those kids as, these are our kids who need more support, these are kids who need a little less, and these kids are doing great, but here's, here's the aha moment, I think. Now that we are able to provide iReady instruction during our IE, our Intervention and Enrichment Class, we are now addressing all students, right? So we have those kids that are receiving interventions with their AAS teachers, but typically, what did our other students do during that time? They saw their teachers for help on homework, they saw, you know, they read a book, they sat in class and went to the websites that teachers provided. Now we're utilizing two days a week for instructional purposes, so we're doing more with our time, which I think will then have a positive effect, especially in this area.
Then following up on Mrs. Yedder's question about Capstone, could you just go through again the multiple options that are available as encores? I know they're not written here, but I'm sure you know what they are.
I do. Do you want me to talk seventh and eighth, or five, six, seven, eight?
Yes, all.
All.
Yeah.
So in fifth and sixth grade, we have a five encore rotation. In fifth grade, it's SEL, Social Emotional Learning. It is art, technology, creative writing, and textiles and design. And that is mirrored in sixth grade as well, although the SEL is not, I know it's going to come to me what the fifth one is in.
Is it health?
It is health, thank you. So the fifth one in sixth grade is health, and then in seventh grade, we have art, and then we have technology or Capstone Research. So those are half-year courses, but they're on a six-day rotation. So a student might have PE, then band or chorus or both, and then they would take art for half of the year, the other half of the year, they would, their third option would be Capstone Research or Technology. And then in eighth grade, it's mandated, we have health and art, so yeah.
This is a micro question related to that. You talked about there are forty-nine students in Algebra One, they're all eighth graders, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes.
So that leaves seventy-six that are not taking Algebra. Can you talk to me more about the Math 7A and then what is happening in eighth grade with the remaining seventy-six students for math?
So in eighth grade, they take Math Eight, and in seventh grade, they take Math Seven. However, if kids are in Math Seven and they identify as being strong students and they want to take the opportunity to take Algebra One, they also have that choice. We do recommend extra support, either in the summertime or toward the end of the year, to get them caught up so that... to get them caught up so that they're ready to take Algebra I. But families have the opportunity to try something for their students should they want to.
And the distinction between seven and 7A?
Advanced.
And, but what is that?
It moves at a little quicker pace. It also incorporates aspects of Algebra so that they are more prepared to then jump into Algebra I the following year. And we have a healthy two cohorts currently.
Janette? Go ahead.
Mrs. Zeca?
Yes.
Thank you for, you both for presenting. I forgot, I didn't mention that at the beginning, so I wanted to mention, thank you. We had talked during your interview regarding what you had planned for your first thirty days, so thirty days have passed. How'd it go?
First and foremost, I'm going to say that I absolutely love my job. I'm still getting to know it, and I'm still getting to know aspects of it. Mr. McCarthy has actually been a great resource for me. I've been shadowing him. I've also been outreach-ing to other people in our industry. I've been outreach-ing with Jackie, I've talked with Jeremy, talked with Natalie, because I'm still learning the position. I will say that one of the things that I want to do in the thirty days is really just get to know Putnam Valley Middle School, and I've been doing that. I've been doing a lot of listening from both students and parents as well as from teachers. I have really tried to immerse myself in your community, which I'm very happy to say I feel a part of. And so those thirty days kind of went quickly, but I do feel a part of it, and I feel that I'm still going to learn, I'm still going to be asking lots of questions. So I hope that when I start calling everybody, they answer the phone. But honestly, I feel that I'm learning my position still, and I want to grow in this position. It's completely brand-new to be on the administrative side rather than the teaching side, so I'm still in the process of learning.
I'd be concerned if you said you knew it all already.
No.
It's like it's, you never know.
No, no, no. But I do feel, honestly, I do feel in these thirty days that I am part of your community, and I appreciate that from all of you. So thank you.
I have two things, not to throw wrenches in anything, but I'm going to do it anyway.
Before your question, I do want to thank Mrs. Zeca, because I will tell you, having somebody shadowing you brings light to many things that you don't always see. So when she does ask me questions, it causes us to reflect on our processes. So I think that's powerful. And, you know, the question of, well, why do you do it that way?
[Laughter]
Thank you. It's like, thank you for asking. I guess I never thought about that. And then when she offers suggestions for improvement, sure, let's try that, why not? And I think that's powerful to have somebody who is questioning the world around us, right? Questioning why we do things here differently than what she may have been used to, and I do, I greatly appreciate that.
I'd also like to share that Mrs. Zeca is being very humble in the impact she's already had on our faculty. Not only have I heard such wonderful things from our teachers, but I've gotten to witness firsthand her being whip-smart. She is a data analyst, and she really is using data to drive instruction in the middle school. So I'm really, really grateful for Mrs. Zeca and grateful for this team and the work they're going to do with our MYP program.
Thank you.
So my questions are getting to the why. I was wondering, as you're talking about the clubs, that you have interest in chess and cheerleading, and you have, if there's only two wanting to come on and you're dropping seven, why would there be a budget issue if you can just swap out the budgets? And I'm not going to get into Jill or Jeremy's budget world on this, but it seems to me that you'd be able to do that.
So it just depended on the time of year at which it was presented to us. So there's no rhyme or reason why certain ones went away, other than really typical enrollment and loss of interest in those courses or clubs.
Right.
So if we don't have the kids that want to attend those clubs, we don't run them. So, don't get me wrong, all those didn't go away last year. That was over time. And actually, dance club started at one time because we had a large cohort of kids interested, and Ms. Diaz ran that course. Take Five in Yoga, Mrs. Warden and Mrs. Casey ran that for like three or four years, and then all of a sudden, we didn't have as much interest. So that kind of went away. Just the newest interest was in those two new clubs, so I don't want to give you the wrong impression that we have more clubs going away than we have interest in. The ones down the right-hand side of the page, we've had strong interest in for many years, and that's why they continue to run with such a healthy turnout. So it's really just based on interest in, unfortunately, I should say fortunately, but not, but unfortunately, a lot of our seventh and eighth graders play sports, and those run in the afternoons, and that's a more ample amount of time for a club to run. So we have more fifth and sixth graders in our clubs typically than we see seventh and eighth grade. So we want to give opportunities for all, but we don't always have the numbers in certain areas, and that's why some go away and some stay and some start.
Maybe I misunderstood Joe's question, but if there's an interest in a club now, do they have to wait a full year before they can start that club due to budgetary impact? Is what, is that?
Right, if there's not enough dropping out in a one club, so Matt, I see Jeremy's ready to talk, so.
So yeah, so our process is, through the budget development process, is when we determine what clubs will and will not run, and then budgetary decisions for the upcoming year are based upon which clubs are running at that time. So we budget that money in the spring so clubs could run in the fall. So just because we lost seven and gained six, yes, sorry, gained two, we may be spending less money on clubs, but doesn't mean that money didn't get transferred somewhere else or that money isn't allocated elsewhere within the budget. So Travis is correct, where if we're going to add new clubs, we actually post these club positions before the school year is even over, and that's when individuals have the opportunity to apply for them. So we would budget for any new clubs in the spring for those clubs to begin in the fall. Now, if there's something that's a dire need and we needed to start it immediately, there's certainly opportunities for us to transfer money around the budget, to make money available to those. But typically, clubs would wait until the next sort of enrollment period, the following spring.
My concern would always be, students are interested now, they might not be next year. And then, you know, we've lost an opportunity to engage a number of students that you might be able to put something in the spring if they were interested in the fall to do it. Again, I'm not, you know, trying to tell you about budget transfers, but if the money's available in a similar club account and that stills there, I would encourage, just reflecting, to see if we can run a club if there's a lot of interest in the club, you know, to get as much student engagement as we can. That's all I'm saying. I'll leave it to all the professionals to do that. I'm just a board member. Secondly, I want to make sure the middle school feels like they're getting effective use of the Wellness Center. You talked about, you talked about, you know, the options that the students have for recess. You mentioned the gym. You did not mention the Wellness Center. I just want to see, because the Wellness Center is not just a high school property, it is for the entire campus and for the entire district. I want to make sure that you feel that the middle school is getting its due.
Sure. So our staff have opportunities to go over to the Wellness Center. I know that it's utilized daily from ten forty-five to eleven forty-five, which is when the high school has their unit lunch. So that's kind of one of those time periods that is a little bit off limits, but like I said, we're going to run our career fair there. Two years ago, we had our eighth grade end-of-year gathering in that space, but we see it as a shared space. It's just getting the teachers to sign out during times that they might utilize, but I'll tell you, we use the campus more than anyone really knows. We have students on the wellness trail all the time. We have students out behind our building all the time. So to take them out and then go to another indoor space, unless it's maybe like a science lab or something like that, maybe with regards to a physical activity, we could talk more about those opportunities, but I don't think we feel it's the high schools. I just think I could probably do a better job of advertising it as, hey, teachers, we have this space, we can sign it out. So I don't think it's treated as one school's over another. I think that we have so many opportunities that sometimes we just don't think about that space. But I will tell you, often you'll see teachers taking walkie-talkies, taking kids down to the turf right behind the building and that wellness trail. So those seem to be the more get-out-of-the-building options than the Health and Wellness Center.
That might change during the winter, too, when you have, when the outdoor spaces are closed and using the Wellness Center.
Yep.
And along with that, I guess this is a question for Dave at our next meeting, is to make sure that if it is requested, there is an opportunity for them to participate in the facility.
Absolutely, thank you.
So let Dave know that's coming.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
I think a theme that we're seeing now, having the elementary school and the middle school present, is there's certainly a renewed sense of energy and excitement across our buildings. And last year was a very difficult year for everyone, and I'm happy to report that this year has been the opposite of that, right? And individuals are thrilled to be back and really a very positive environment across all of our buildings. So thank you both very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity to work with our community. We appreciate it and your support.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Travis, anybody interested in joining with your group, the fiftieth anniversary, who do they contact? I'm sorry.
That's okay. They can contact me directly at the middle school, t mccarty@pvcsc.org, or they can call the middle school. We're looking to grow that kind of committee, but like I had shared at our listening hour, we have our student council involved, we have our building steering committee involved, but we would love to hear from alumni that may have gone through the building in nineteen seventy-two.
My sister just texted me, and she was a graduate, I believe, in seventy-four or seventy-five.
We would love to have an opportunity to bring the community back. So there's a lot of people that move away, there's a lot of people that still live in the community. Come back and see how much the middle school has grown, because I've heard there were no walls in much of the middle school.
Believe me.
I can assure you there are walls now. There is a learning commons. The campus is beautiful. So I can only imagine what it looked like in seventy-two and what it looks like today. So we are looking forward to giving community members opportunity to come back and giving a tour of the space.
Outstanding.
And our, having ideas for our kids. I mean, just, you saw that nineteen seventy-two slide. What did this look like in nineteen seventy-two? The high school wasn't here.
No.
So brings a smile to my face. They can contact me.
Okay.
And we will connect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Share the campus with cows.
I heard Sam signed up to do whatever he needed him to do. Put his name on the list. All right. So our next presentation this evening is really a second reading of our most up-to-date goals for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So our sort of theme is to aspire and empower. Under our aspirations, just to review this again, we're looking to identify enhanced effective systems and structures to support student learning, and some examples of that are MTSS teams, our program evaluations, and just a general sense of pursuing greatness, not settling for the status quo. Our next goal is to develop and implement communication strategies that engage community members. And there's a wide range of ways we do that, newsletters, steering committees, advisory committees, community partnerships, parent evenings, like the listening hour we had this evening. We have our district advisory committee meeting coming up, social media, and other web apps. And then the third goal under our aspirations is to emphasize the importance of personal and professional growth. We do that through professional development, faculty department, grade-level meetings, personal goal-setting, and remaining future-focused. Second theme is empowerment. Some of our goals under that include pursuing opportunities for leadership goals, leadership roles. This includes both teachers and student leadership positions, facilitation of professional learning, committee membership, turnkey trainers, leadership for all, just acknowledging by virtue of being an educator, you are in fact a leader of students, and what you model, collaboration and share with students is valuable and willing to share best practices. The promotion of a positive school climate and culture, encouraging individuals to be present at events, especially our music, arts, academics, and athletic events, valuing your colleagues, building relationships with students and adults, participating in building activities, and open and honest conversations and problem-solving. And then our final goal is access to a wide range of learning opportunities and spaces. So there's an emphasis on embracing different learning styles, experiential learning, field trips, virtual experiences, outdoor learning spaces, connecting with our community partners, and encouraging innovation, risk-taking, and instruction. So that is a quick summary of the most up-to-date district goals, and this will appear later on the agenda for the board's consideration. Any questions or comments?
I, while I understand it, and I have no objection to it, if this document, most of it, feels internally focused as opposed to externally focused, I know there are parts of it that are duly activated for students and the community as well as internally. Again, I have no objection to it, I just know that it just feels there's a lot of us as a district, as a building group and educational structure, as opposed to kind of down into the weeds and with students. I understand they're in here, so I'm just, for no other reason than just to, I guess, hear myself talk, that I have issues with how external, how internally focused this is, but I do see the external pieces in here as well.
Well, I had written on mine, after aspire and empower, I added to ensure the most positive outcome for every learner, because all of these things, when our staff, our board, our administration grows, we share that with the students that are, because that's how they grow.
Exactly, yeah.
But the growth is not for our, it's not for us necessarily, it is to be shared with our students. So, but again, I think all of these things are great, and if we do that, it is going to change a student's life also.
Sure, you know, the final sentence or the leading sentence is for what the result is, it's just everything else in here is kind of internal, and that's fine. I'm just saying that's, I want to identify that. So I don't, when the community looks or asks, like, this looks like you're just talking about yourself, when, to the end goal of not being internally focused, that's all I want to say. Again, I'm not objecting to it, I'm not going to vote against it, I don't think it's a bad thing, just want to bring that up.
Anything else?
No.
All right. So I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, yay. So we're going to talk about the New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention Resolutions. So just for a little background information for the public, there is a resolutions committee. The New York State School Boards Association, one of their arms is advocacy for school districts with legislature, the legislature in Albany, and with the state ed department. They have a resolutions committee that has representatives from every area of New York, all thirteen districts, like we're in Westchester-Putnam District, as well as the Big Five schools. They review all of the resolutions that have been proposed by individual districts or BOCs or groups of districts. So all the resolutions come from actual districts, and this committee goes through them. When they met in August, they decided that, there were forty-three, which is a huge number of proposal, proposed resolutions. they decided that, there were 43, which is a huge number of proposal, proposed resolutions. Nine of them were sunsetting resolutions, which means that they had expired, because I think they last for three to five years. So did the New York State School Boards Association feel that we should continue with them? There were 23 proposals that were recommended for, for adoption, and there were 11 proposals that were not recommended for adoption. All of those proposals were important and valuable proposals. But there were reasons why the New York State School Boards Association said, this is not, we do not feel that this is, should be our focus in terms of advocacy this year. So then Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association met, and we went through the proposals. And how did Westchester-Putnam feel about each of the things that the state, New York State School Boards Association had recommended? So instead of doing all 43, which is a lot, I'd like to do the ones where Westchester-Putnam did not make a decision, so that we can decide. And then if there are any other ones that, that we want to talk about, that people have concerns about, either agree or disagree with NISBA or WestPutt, we can do them. Does that sound okay?
Yep.
So the first one is the one that Ms. Kraus spoke to, which is the resolution adding fully state-funded arts and music education as a common school branch that should be incorporated into the public school curriculum to provide a more well-rounded education for children. New York State School Boards Association said that this was good. They thought we should support that. Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, some of them felt that we often ask, we often say to the state ed department, let us handle things on the local level. Don't get involved. And in this case, we're doing the opposite. We're asking state ed department to, to make a, a ruling or advocate for that. So that was the discussion and why they couldn't decide. But after listening to Ms. Kraus, which was amazing, I also talked to Dr. Mazzara today. I just happened to catch him in the parking lot. And we were talking about this funding for arts and music education and how important that is for a fully-developed student. They can't just be reading, writing, math, social studies, and science. That, that they, they really felt like the arts should be included as part of the, as one of a common school branch. So I, I support that resolution. But I don't, I need to know how you guys feel.
I support it. I mean, the distinction between being part of the common branch, I mean, none of it is fully funded. I mean, the state doesn't fully fund anything.
Right.
So I mean, really, it's, it's on local school boards, local communities that are going to be funding this for the most, anyway, other than certain school districts where they get a, a much higher percentage of, of state funding and other funding. And for us, it probably, I shouldn't say it's meaningless, but it is over, it is not as though it's, we don't consider it core to our district. But I, the, the question becomes, what does it mean to other districts that it's not part of their core? And if we, if it's meant to be part of the core, what does that do financially to them in many ways? That's my question. I don't know. I mean, maybe I'm living with rose-colored glasses. What, what elementary school, or middle school, or high school in the state doesn't have some sort of art or music? And the question is, if we ask for this support, that it becomes part of the core, does that then mean the curriculum, then, then the state is essential, or state ed is forced to create a curriculum or a framework for a curriculum? Whereas now, I don't know how, Jeremy, you can tell us how current music and art are built curriculum-wise for our district when there's not this common, the core piece of it.
So while I certainly don't know those specifics, I have to imagine that art and music have standards that they're still following. Whether those come from New York State or a nationally-recognized organization, they certainly have standards in which they are following.
They were actually recently updated and re-released standards. So arts and music and PE, they all have standards.
But not considered part of the core curriculum.
I think to Ms. Kraus' point is, it's, it's almost like a matter of semantics, right? The standards are there. To your point, I think an overwhelming majority of districts treat it as such. It's just not, on a legal standpoint, it's not considered to be core like many other activities are. And I know that Charles and I mentioned, align themselves with a federal requirement that, that this be part of child, children's education. So I think it's more, you said, it's more just getting it out there and sort of acknowledging the fact that this is in fact part of our core academic program, more so than it is a funding piece, or a standards piece, or an assessment piece. But it's just acknowledging the fact that this is already happening.
Because it used to be very common to hear, a budget's gone down, we have to cut the music program, or the band program. And again, not here, but that was a common issue when budgets were going down, or et cetera, that, that does, that noise doesn't, hasn't been happening, or we're not hearing that noise in at least this part of the state. So Jackie, maybe you have something to add.
I would agree, but I don't think it's uncommon to hear about schools, particularly in areas where there's an increased focus on ELA and math testing, to bump time, minimize time, reduce the amount of special area offerings, and some, in some cases eliminate, in favor of additional time on the core curriculum that is assessed. So I think that's maybe the difference between our school district and school districts around us, and schools in other parts of the state and country, that do not emphasize the whole child as much as they do the assessments.
So I mean, I, what comes to mind immediately is, is if Buffalo, I mean, just as an example, because they don't usually get a lot of good news, Buffalo might be really focused because their, their reading and math scores have been really poor, when they had to refocus and they're putting additional dollars and time and money into getting those scores up, then it might be at the sacrifice of some arts programs. By being part of the core, what does that do? What does it force them not to be able to do? I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm trying to figure out, what does it do for those that need to make that change?
I'm going to make an assumption here, but I think what it comes down to is the time mandated by the state for these programs to have. So where we have mandates on time for literacy, mandates on time for math, mandates in time on science and things like that, it's
And physical education, right? We have a physical education mandate, and a health mandate.
So there, we have state requirements of certain numbers of hours of things that need to take place in the school day. So perhaps in the case of music and arts, it is not the same. And how do we make sure that our, we're prioritizing those as much as we do in the IB? All of those subjects are created equal in the IB. And as much time, you know, there's some time that needs to be allocated for each month. Maybe not the same numbers, but there is time required. So I think just making sure that the time is required and schools need to meet that. That's my assumption.
So Helen, what do you think? I have to, I have to vote for you guys.
The art teacher. Go ahead, ask her.
So yes, support?
It's so necessary to have the arts in school. It's, it's part of social, emotional learning, too. I've had students actually from Putnam Valley, in Putnam Valley when I worked here, and then when I went to the high school level. And some of them were not necessarily academic students, but they, they're making probably more than I made as an assistant principal in the arts now, because they were that talented. And to not acknowledge that is, it's a travesty, because we have to look at the whole person. And when you're only looking at core subjects, your brain is fried by the end of the day. Kids need a break. Kids need an outlet to be creative. And we have to keep the arts.
Jeanette, yes?
I support it. I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. So if we go down to number eight, I have the old numbers, I have the new numbers, so it's a little confusing. But eight says NISBA supports universal pre-K for three- and four-year-olds statewide. But 28 says, New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would assure equitable full-day pre-kindergarten funding for all New York school districts. Equitable full-day pre-K funding. So one is without any kind of really funding, funding, just supports universal pre-K. And one is assure equitable funding for, for pre-K. So those are two separate. We could support one and not support the other, or support them both, so.
Piggyback on what Joe was saying, there are districts that simply cannot afford to pay for pre-K all by themselves. And I believe we would be hard-pressed financially to do that as well. So I would only support 28.
Okay. Joe? He's thinking. Helen?
Go to somebody else.
What do you think? I support both? Both?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeanette?
You didn't give me 28. I'm in agreement with Sam said. I think that the funding is the key to this. And we can't, we have so many unfunded mandates, and we know that they're not going to fund everything. But we need to be as proactive as we can.
Okay.
So 28.
So yes to 28, no to eight?
You know, I think there's going to be changes. I think people are going to propose, because of this, because of the conflict between the two, not necessarily conflict, but how they complement each other. I would imagine at the meeting, somebody would offer an amendment to Resolution Eight
Okay.
That would include
28.
28. And that is where I, I think, yeah, I, I find where I sit. I would, I would approve both. I would vote for both. But I, you know, again, we would be hard-pressed without additional funding and without, with a different formula than what is currently proposed. Because right now, we can do pre-K for a lottery for a handful of students, but we can't get a provider to do it.
For everybody.
For that cost.
So.
Okay. So no if there's no funding, but attached, or some kind of a
Something that incorporates the 28 into eight. I would, I would leave that in your hands in my mind.
Okay. Nine, New York State School Boards Association shall petition New York State Education Department and the commissioner to include as a mandatory prerequisite to being employed by a school district in the state of New York as a licensed security guard, that said individual receives as part of their training and licensure, a separate and specific credential signifying training and knowledge of the laws, rules, and regulations applicable to schools.
What, what was the discussion around this, Barbara? Do you recall?
The discussion was, wait a minute, I think it's in the back here. Whoops, it's number nine. It's unclear as to what training is necessary. Our advocacy suggests that this is not the most critical need in terms of school security, that most of the school security officers that we have are well-trained, or former police officers, or, or current police officers.
I do, I do think a lot of the concern, I shouldn't say the concern, I kind of agree with, with the resolution, because there is a difference between
A warehouse.
Being a mall cop
Yeah.
And being in a school district. And I'd imagine most non-SROs that are deputized, that are part of law enforcement already, that are security, they're in the elementary schools, rather than in the high schools and middle schools. Just my gut tells me that's where the non-necessarily armed guard is going to be, is going to be in the elementary school. So I would, I, I would think that, now it does say not what the specific training is, doesn't say what that is, but I think there should be some sort of specific training for them. So I mean, again, not a top priority, I don't think, because at least for us, we have SROs or SROs that can get to any building, but that's not going to be the case for others. I, I do think it makes sense to have some sort of specific training.
Dan, can we put you on the spot?
That means you got to walk all the way up to the microphone.
No, no, no.
Nobody's going to be able to hear.
You think that there should be separate, specific credentials signifying training and knowledge of the laws, rules, and regulations applicable to schools, specifically to schools, rather than just, if you were a former police officer, you can be a school security officer?
He really needs to come to the microphone.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
The people at home just heard the question, and they won't hear any answer. I was going to have to repeat everything you said. I was getting nervous.
You have to say your name.
What I was, Deputy Muri, SRO for the school district. What I was saying with, like, the security guards is, I guess, it depends on what you're looking for them to do. Like, if, if they're going to just be like a physical presence, just checking doors, maybe not needing the additional training as more of like a security guard that's going to be in the hallways and how to deal with the children, how to deal, you know, if someone, if you get an irate student, you know, it's going to be a lot different than handling an adult. So maybe that's, that's where the training would have to come in.
But you would have that training. I know the sheriff's department provides
We, we do, yes. Yeah, this, this would be, it, it sounds more like private security, or, you know, that, that you're hiring it.
If we didn't have an SRO, if we just had another security person.
Yeah, you would need special training then.
So you agree with that?
Yeah, you would need the special training. But I know that SROs from the department are well-trained.
Get it. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right. But they're specifically trained to work with students.
Yeah, I think any, any police officers, we, we go through a, a whole different training outside of the police academy on, you know, education law, how to deal with children properly, you know, information that's releasable, not. But that's because we interact with the students more.
Sure.
Even though we are doing security for the building, too, but we, you know, are
Right.
educators and everything with the, with, with the kids.
I support this.
Yeah, I, I support it all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 15.
Now we're going to call you to the mic every meeting.
Supports the adoption of legislation which would require New York State Education Department to develop regulations providing oversight over special education parent and rules of conduct and enforcement procedures for same.
Well, that's invaded, now.
I'm still very confused about what you're talking about.
This is basically
I defer to trained advocates.
Very invasive. I mean, it's like
It's, they're requiring trained advocates, and not everybody can afford a trained advocate, or there aren't going to be enough. And some of the advocates, untrained advocates, are great. Natalie can tell you, like, you know, you said
What's your thoughts, Natalie?
And trained ones.
Natalie, what's your input?
So.
You know, I have mixed feelings on it, but I agree. I'm sorry. Didn't turn it down. I mean, I'll read it again. I think requiring any parent to have a trained advocate, it could be a problem for many.
Yeah.
Okay. So no.
Yeah.
No?
No. I oppose it. Yeah.
NISBA supports legislation at the state level that would allow for school board members to receive a stipend for their work as a trustee. I've got to say no.
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 Not that I don't support it, but I could see, I could, your discussion from last week, your last meeting, I could see where it could be, someone may not run for the school board because they don't have the
Child care.
Child care or the funding, or, so I, I do definitely see that, but I'm okay with whatever. I didn't sign up, just for a paycheck.
Okay. Twenty. NISBA supports legislation at the state and/or federal level that would reform the current gun laws to strengthen background checks, implement red flag laws, as well as laws that restrict guns from those under the age of 21. Now, wait a minute.
They need to keep their nose out of that business. I'm militant about that. Second Amendment is a constitutional right. And what the state has done in defiance of the Supreme Court ruling will be overturned. It's in the court system right now. This is unconstitutional, and there should be no action taken on that. I feel very strongly about the Second Amendment right.
So the Garrison School Board has amended their original one to say the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation at the state and/or federal level that would reform the current gun laws to strengthen background checks, implement red flag laws, restrict guns from those under the age of 21, as well as reform gun storage laws by providing for heightened penalties for insecure storage, or stringent firearm storage laws, public awareness programs that encourage secure storage.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
And stronger child, you're making it worse for you.
Yeah, making it much worse.
I'm just not sure that that's a school board
Right, it's not their privilege. You know, let the politicians decide that. We can do it through the voting booth, you know. We don't need a school boards association which is focused on education to be sticking their nose in a political issue. I, I'm totally against that.
Not that I get a vote, but I do want to point out that we spent two years deferring to health professionals regarding health-related issues because it was outside the purview of a school district. And certainly had political connections to it. And I see this through a very similar light of falling outside the purview of a public school board. And certainly not something that any one of us are individually experts in deciding.
The medical end was done through our governor, not through the school boards association. And that's the difference. You know, the governor wants to put this law, they, she has done that, but it's being challenged.
I'm just saying, as a school board, there's certain things that are within the purview of the school board and certain things that are not. And just like I think public health decisions are outside the purview of the school board, I also think gun control legislation falls outside
Oh, I agree. I agree. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Helen?
I agree.
See, I look at this as a mental health issue, and I see red flags all over the place. I'm not a legislator, but I am so anti-gun. I'm an old hippie, so I am not, I am not the person to even discuss this. I don't think anybody should own a gun, make a gun, look at a gun. Sorry.
All right.
Jeanette?
I agree to disagree.
Where I agree that we do need to strengthen background checks personally, that's my voice. I agree that it's not within our purview.
Okay. So those are the only ones that we had questions about. However, I did get two emails from parents in the community, asking us to look at, wait a minute.
Number thirty-seven, I believe.
But before that, there was, there were, so it was
Thirty-five? Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven?
Thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Right, those are the three.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me look at thirty-five. Let me go to thirty-five. So thirty-five says, resolve that NISBA supports proposals, guidelines, and legislation in favor of local school district control and/or regional by-county control over matters pertaining to safety protocols and operations regarding the prevention of the spread of communicable diseases, illnesses, sorry. The resolutions committee felt that it was most appropriate to leave the public health decisions up to public health experts, rather than those in the education field. While recognizing the importance of communication and coordination between school districts and health departments, the committee also mentioned that public health departments have access to important health data that local school districts naturally do not have access to.
And my take on this is that information, however it's used, and data is probably more, there's more resources behind the State Department of Health than the Putnam County Department of Health. Not that I'm disparaging the Putnam County Department of Health, but as we saw when the regulations changed on testing and contact tracing, et cetera, there's no way the local Department of Health was able to handle what was being issued down, because there's just not the resources there. It's not hundreds of people working in that department. It's, you know, a handful. So I think while we were lucky in that we had a really good relationship with Putnam Department of Health, that that's great for information, but I don't know that, and I'm not saying that New York State doesn't share all their information with the locals, but maybe they do, maybe they don't. I just think that there's more resource there to make informed decisions on whether you agree or disagree with what they were in this most current situation. It feels to me as though it makes more sense to not be, obviously, we're not the ones making that decision, but I think the resources are probably better used at the state level than the local level of Germany. What do you have to say about that?
I was just gonna point out, the initial resolution doesn't specify Department of Health. It just says county control, but underneath the rationale, it does mention local departments of health, so.
Right.
I was just gonna point out that you added Department of Health. That's not in the resolution.
I did.
But it's in the rationale.
And, because I guess the other alternative, who else regulates the county? Would either be the county Department of Health, or the person who's elected to be the county executive. And I, you know, I don't know. So I would
But wasn't, wasn't a lot of the, weren't a lot of the protocols based on the number of cases you had in your county? They were, right?
In your district.
I mean, those are the metrics they use, but those metrics, and they came from the state. And for, I know for a fact, the county did not have access to the same data that the state had access to, even though that was a request we made time and time again, was to get more localized and more statewide data to make an informed decision. That was not stuff we had access to.
Sometimes localized data is probably very hard to get.
It was the governor's executive decisions, you know, he gave himself that power, and then he started, you know, rulin' the roost. I don't have any love for the former governor at all.
So NISBA doesn't feel that this is something that they feel like they can adopt as a advocacy policy?
I agree with that.
I agree with how it's written, it should not be adopted.
Okay. What was that, thirty-five? Thirty-six, resolve that NISBA oppose mandates from the state ed department that require school districts to implement curriculum regarding matters not pertaining to standard academic subjects. I can't be sure what that means. I mean, the state ed department does give us, you know, the curriculum that, I mean, the state wants to ensure that every student in New York State, there are uniform expectations for students. And that's what, that's the curriculum that they set forth.
But the caveat is matters not pertaining, not pertaining to standard academic subjects. So I understand where this is coming from.
But do we have mandates that are not pertaining to standard academic subjects?
You mean like the arts?
The arts.
Me, right? We were just talking about it. It's not part of the core, but, you know, they have
But they're standard.
They have standards for it.
I think what they're talking about are some of the more controversial aspects of the state's mandates, and
But I'm not sure what it is that they're exactly
Well, that's the problem. It's too amorphous. I mean, it could be anything, you know.
How it's written.
I don't like the way it's written.
How would NISBA advocate for that?
Well, they oppose it right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they said they can't. They said, we don't think we should be doing that, because we don't know what it is they want to do.
Yeah, right, it's not
And that could, and that could be, somebody could make a change to that.
They could.
But
Yeah.
It's unlikely.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's very unclear exactly what they mean by that phrase, not pertaining to standard academic.
I mean, it's part of this series of Long Island districts.
Yeah.
They're all, they're all kind of doing the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, thirty-seven says that, resolve that the NISBA advocate, in capital letters, for the adoption of parental rights legislation. Such legislation will protect parents' fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children, which includes, but is not limited to matters of education, medical care, moral, religious, and character training. In addition, parents have the right to be informed about their children's educational programs and should require school districts to promote parental involvement by providing access to curricula and instructional materials, and legally protect a parent's right to withdraw a child from portions of school curriculum. The committee expressed their belief that public education, which is guaranteed and open for all, is inherently different from the expectations of a private or homeschooled education. The committee further noted that current law already provides parents with the right to inspect any instructional material used as part of the educational curriculum for the student. And I cannot think of a time in this district when we have not, when we have not upheld the rights of parents to direct the upbringing of their children.
I'm kind of torn on this one because I do believe, and I've always believed, that the parent has to be the final arbiter of what occurs with their children. Unless, of course, they're doing harm to the children, physical, mental abuse, something like that. Otherwise, they are in charge of the child's totality. We are an educational institution. That's our charge. We educate. We don't do religious instructions. We don't do anything outside of the standard education model. And the parent is responsible for the, truly, the socialization and the moral upbringing of that child. They are the arbiter. That is their sacred right as parents. So I'm kind of pulled on that. At the same time, I would not want to see one parent's desires smash into the requests of another parent. For instance, we had the big discussion about books being removed from the library. Totally disagree with that, because then what you're doing is doing what you charged the school district of doing, forcing somebody to adhere to your own beliefs and tenets. I see why they would oppose this. It will open up a can of worms, but
Well, it's not, and it's not that NISBA opposes parent
Yeah, the sanctity of the parent
They're just saying this is difficult to advocate for because it's already in the law. It's already been advocated for, and the law says, parents have those rights. So, you know, how do they spend their advocacy time trying to advocate for rights that you already have?
I think this is a very slippery slope. I really do. I, to piggyback on what Sam is saying, my concern is if you have some type of external group that now wants to come in, and they only want their needs and their wishes to be met. We have to worry about everybody.
That's right.
Not just specific groups.
I agree.
And that's my problem with thirty-seven.
And, you know, a parent's right to withdraw a child from portions of the school curriculum, if I'm teaching Native Americans, or I don't know, Revolutionary War, or whatever I happen to be teaching, and a parent objects to the way I have them studying the Iroquois Confederacy, and wants to withdraw them from that part of the curriculum, like what am I, how do I then teach that class? What do I do with the child while I'm teaching that class?
I don't think it's meant to be, you know, directed at any of the typical standard academic courses that we offer. I think it's direct, for instance, health courses. We have had kids not sit through the health program, historically. You know, when I was AP, I remember that. And the parent requested that.
But we allow parents that right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But that's, that's a portion of the school curriculum that's a whole subject, rather than just, suppose we're reading a book, and gonna discuss the book. I mean, to me, I am fully in favor of parents' rights. I've asked for parents, I've said to parents, I can't do this alone. The only way your child is going to succeed is if we work together as partners. I firmly believe in the partnership between parents and teachers and students. But I am also the educator, and I need, I need to educate in a way that I feel is most appropriate for my class. And like, it would be hard for me if a parent wanted, to me, that's like a lot of little individual homeschooling in a public school.
No, yeah, and I agree, that can't be done. That's why I'm not supporting it, but I understand the points that this is bringing out.
I do.
Look, the elephant in the room is that there are many individuals, many parents, who feel that the private or the public school education system has failed them one way or another. And this is their reaction to it, and I sympathize with that. But again, we are an education system, and we provide education for everyone. And no child, no one, should ever feel diminished with who they are or what they're about. So that's why, you know, I understand the intent of this, but I could not support this right now.
All right, and I do think that this is, this is, it's not that New York State School Boards Association is against parental rights. It's not. It says it cannot, it doesn't feel like it. The resolution committee felt that this was not something that they could advocate for in the normal course of their dealing with the
Right.
Additionally, this is not even proposing to New York State Education Department. This is looking to change law, add law. But that's
Yeah, legislation, which is, again, do that on a political route. I agree, Joe, I agree.
Okay, Jeanette, yes?
Oh, I agree with what you have all said.
Okay.
The legislation, that's out of our purview. I totally agree with parental rights. But I, what I underlined is, withdraw a child from portions of school curriculum, because I could see that going, well, you know, the wrong way. It's more than a health class, potentially. So again, how it's written, I
Yep.
I have concerns about this.
Agreed.
The last one, Resolution thirty-eight, resolve that the NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association advocate for the reinstatement of the religious or moral objection to immunizations. The resolution committee felt that they found value in continuing to uphold longstanding student vaccination requirements in the health and safety interests of students. The committee also recognized that current law permits medical exemptions to the requirements. So you already have medical exemptions.
I support medical exemptions. I have a hard time supporting religious or moral objections.
I have a hard time supporting religious or moral objections. I don't, I'm not a, it's, I'm, I'm not.
Well, and I'm not sure that I want NISBA to do it.
I'm not, yeah, you know, I don't have the background, the medical background to make these decisions, so.
You know, again, this is a political entity. You go to Florida and you have a governor who very much says, yeah, all bets are off. You don't have to get a, matter of fact, if you do get a shot, you're going to be penalized for it. So it, it, it becomes a political creature. I, we need to stay away from that type of thing.
But I don't promote mandating, for example, mandating a COVID vaccination, so.
Well, I agree with you. If it's a medical concern, absolutely. But anything else beyond that, 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 you got to go to your legislators and your governor and, you know, work it that way, I think.
Okay. All right. That was all that we've had to discuss. The rest of it, I'm just going to stick with what Wes puts. Unless I hear something at the meeting, I will let you know. The results after Monday, marathon, five hours.
Do they usually change that much?
Other than, other than the, the art.
The first one.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Barbara, do they usually change much at all?
There, sometimes there are. They cross out and change the wording and, you know, add things in order to make, help it pass.
My gut goes along with the idea that since it's not in person, there's less of that.
Yeah.
Because you don't have the interaction at these tables and districts sitting next to each other that are all part of this thing, trying to do, you know, whatever the, the work happening behind the scenes is with each district's representatives is not going to happen the same way as, as in person. Because that, that, that sometimes gets heated because of the time, they build in time for changes, just got to ring the bell, I'll raise your hand, and it's very interesting when you do it live. So I've, I've enjoyed that twice.
The, um, you're going to get, on Sunday night, you're going to get an email that's an observer view only link? So if you wanted to.
Watch the meeting.
Nothing better to do, you wanted to watch five hours of cable talk.
No, that's good. I'd like to see it. I, I'd like to see it, yeah.
Um, you can, it's a view only, so, you know, you can leave it on and wander away and come back if you hear screaming and yelling. But you will get a link so that you can watch. I have a different link. I'll get one that I can vote and.
Good, good, yeah.
Okay, so.
That'd be great.
Okay. Student Representatives Report. I do see we have student representatives. What are their names? Can, Natalie, can you go around and read me their names?
No, I haven't. It's the first part of my presentation, so.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
So, so we do have, my first bullet is, we do have student representatives. We've named student representatives and I'm hopeful that they be, begin to attend the next board meeting. So our three student representatives are Simone Gabriel, Emily Nielsen, and Christian Nolan. So I had the opportunity to meet with them and Mr. Scampoli. I sort of expressed my gratitude for their willingness to take the position. I emphasized the importance of their voice and hoped to encourage them to become engaged in any discussions in which they thought represented student interests. So I'm optimistic that they will be engaged. I know that they'll have thoughtful discussions and I look forward to welcoming them at our next meeting. We had our first meeting of the year of the DEI committee. Most of our conversation focused on the theme of communication and there were sort of three takeaways in which we're considering at this time. A social media awareness evening for parents, development of teacher talking points in response to inappropriate language document, and a presentation for students on the power of words. So that was our initial conversation. It was only a few members present, so I know we'll revisit that at our next meeting, but I did want to provide a quick update. You want to add anything, Jackie? That's good.
I think that captures it pretty well.
Okay. Kudos to me.
Check.
I like that. Short and sweet, good.
Your approval means a lot.
It's all different.
So, and actually, very exciting news. This is newly public information. For those who have noticed, we've had several visitors or several groups visiting from the Garrison School District. So for those who are not familiar with the Garrison School District, they're obviously a neighboring district, but they serve students in K through eight. They approached the, myself and the board early in the year and asked us if there, if we would have interest in being one of the choices for the high schools in which they tuition their students to. So currently, they tuition students to Haldane and to O'Neill. Those are the two school districts that the students have a choice of. So we said that we were certainly would be interested in taking on some Garrison students. They sent two groups of board members and a superintendent to visit the school. We did a presentation, they walked to school, it's all the community lunch, visited many classrooms. So thank you to everyone who welcomed them, to our IB coordinators who came in twice to present a little bit about the IB program, and to all the teachers who welcomed them into their classrooms. My understanding is they left thoroughly impressed with everything that they've seen. I know they had a public discussion last evening at their board meeting, which is why we can have a public discussion about it at ours. But it's my expectation that we will be moving forward with a contract with the Garrison University School District to be one of their options for the high school students that they, so their students pick. They have autonomy as to which district they attend. So why I don't expect thirty of them to show up the first year, I'm hopeful that some do and I'm also hopeful that it'll grow over the years as students become more comfortable coming to the Putnam High School District and Garrison families learn more about all the great things that are happening here in Putnam Valley. So that's exciting news. It's something that Putnam Valley has sort of secretly talked about for many years, like, why don't they send them here? So I'm grateful that they thought of us and then they thought highly enough about what they saw to enter into a contract with us or hopefully to do so. I am current, I was going to say you had a question. I guess so you lead.
Just to confirm, coming in, starting at eighth grade through?
Ninth grade.
I'm sorry, ninth grade through.
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, so I'm currently serving as a superintendent representative for Section One Athletic Council, representing the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's. I don't think congratulations are in order. I think my hand is the only one that went up. Anthony DeCarlo, who was doing it, has retired, so they needed a replacement and I must have missed the meeting. But one of the topics that was at the forefront of the one and only meeting I've attended is the topic, and I've received several parent emails about this in the recent days, which is why I thought it was pertinent to discuss today, is around scheduling and the availability of officials. So it's no secret that Section One and I would say sections across the state are struggling to find officials to, to, through the games. One, I think the core group of officials who have been doing the games for many, many years continues to age and there doesn't seem to be the same flow of feeder program of officials coming into it. As someone who coaches quite regularly, I can imagine the, as the age of, of officials has increased, the behavior of some has certainly worsened and I'm, I'm sure that is a driving factor behind some individuals not moving in that direction to become a licensed official. So there's lots of work that's going on at the sectional level to try to remedy the situation. Conversations about locking schedules, conversations about helping officials groups, feeder programs, visiting high schools, all of those things are under the works, but I do apologize for what happens is as games are moved and officials are rescheduled, they're, they're pulled to cover higher level games, right? So they're pulled to cover varsity games, they're pulled to cover junior varsity games, and they're unfortunately pulled for many of our modified games, which means modified games are happening in the absence of an official, which obviously raises its own concerns. So I know that Dave is looking at ways to try to help support that. I mean, we, all the scheduling and hiring officials is done through Bosse's, so the district really has no control over it. But I know Dave is exploring maybe more creative solutions as to how we can at least have someone on site to supervise and maybe help the coaches during that game. Just a quick shout out for our first responder appreciation events. As we had mentioned, Wednesday, October twenty-sixth is our classroom visit at the elementary school beginning at nine AM and our equipment and apparatus event at the middle school, high school campus beginning at ten-thirty. So I hope individuals in the community, both paid and volunteer, consider taking the time to visit an elementary school classroom, bring any equipment you can here to the middle school. And then maybe most importantly, on Friday, October twenty-eighth is our appreciation before the football game. Individuals are just asked to show up. You don't have to sign up beforehand. If you can wear a uniform, that would be excellent. We simply walk down the driveway onto the turf and then really provide the community an opportunity to thank you for all that you do for our community, for other communities that you serve. Again, paid, volunteer, doesn't matter. I've had actually recent graduates who no longer live in the community but graduated asked if they can attend. I said, absolutely. So any alumni who was a, now a first responder is welcome to attend. I would love to fill the football field because we know we live in a community full of nurses, police officers, firefighters, EMTs, so on and so forth. So I'm hopeful that more individuals, there's something that's going to happen every year and I'm sure it'll grow over time, but please consider attending. I want to just recognize a couple of students, Atticus Lee, Clarinet, and Haley Cron. Voice has been selected to the two thousand twenty-two NISBA Zone Ten Area All-State Music Festival. So congratulations to them. We have hosted our elementary school and our middle school, high school flu clinics, so thank you to Putnam County, Department of Health for arranging that. As I had mentioned earlier, we hosted our first listening hour of the year prior to this event. More to come. And.
Before March?
Before, before then. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Natalie real quick as we speak a little bit about our special education and our counseling plan.
Sure. So tonight, you're going to adopt our special education plan and the counseling plan, our school counseling plan. They're really, New York State requires us to have these documents, so they're, they're sort of formal, dense information that is available to the public at any time. They'll be posted on our website. The special education plan really just describes all of our different programs, what we have, the schools we send other students to, our budget summary, things like that. The school counseling plan was developed with a committee, a group of lots of community members actually participated in our school counseling plan, a board member, administrators, teachers, school counselors. So that plan was developed and it really, again, is a more formalized plan that describes what we do at each grade level. It describes our services and just formally putting all of those type of things into a document so that it's available to the public. What, often what these documents don't do is tell you, you know, what goes into, I'll give you an example, like an eight-one-one class. So it might have New York State's description in there. It doesn't tell you all of the things that that teacher is trained in to be able to teach in an eight-one-one class. Or it doesn't tell you that a co-teacher will often, you know, work with students outside of school to, to support them extra. So it doesn't give you the heart and soul of what we do. It's really just two formal documents that we're required to have by the state that describe what we do and what we have available for everybody. But again, there's a lot that, that goes on and if anybody has questions or thoughts or ideas about what else could be put in these plans, always welcome for ideas. And we'll be running committees again this year to talk about it and I will report out at the end of the year to the board on the school counseling plan in particular.
And where would you find them on the website?
So they'll be posted under Parent Resources and then they'll be posted under the PPS webpage. Yep.
It's light reading, like ninety to a hundred pages each.
Of, yeah, I mean, the special ed plan is like probably ninety pages. That's why I said it, if you want to read it, great. But if, again, the counseling plan, same thing, they're just dense, they're, they're, they're lengthy, they're required. But if you have questions or ideas, please feel free to, to come knocking at my door.
We can read it while we're watching the vote.
I can. You can tell me, give me a shortened version.
So just a couple upcoming events. We have our College Financial Aid Evening Tuesday, October eighteenth. We also have our District Advisory Council Meeting, our first meeting of the year, the same evening. And we have IB Information Evening scheduled for Thursday, October twentieth. That's it. Thank you.
Is tomorrow homecoming? Huh? Is tomorrow homecoming?
Yes, tomorrow. Tomorrow is the homecoming football game, the fourteenth. The game starts at seven PM on the turf.
Thank you.
No, is it? I thought it was next week, but okay.
They changed the date.
Oh, okay.
They got moved to the fourteenth.
So it got moved and have, even though the middle school Halloween thing got moved from Friday to Thursday because of the homecoming. They're staying on Thursday.
But they're going to do the first responders that night.
The first responders.
Gotcha.
On the twenty-eighth.
Kidoki. Good thing I'm not in charge of the calendar.
Okay, we're going to move into new business? So, resolution number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to adopt the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Education District Goals as per document number ninety, twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Karen Cruzy, a teacher from the district, effective the close of business on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three as per document ninety-one, twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to acknowledge this and are also our next item regarding another resignation and thank both these individuals for, I just looked quickly, well over forty years of service to the Putnam Valley School District and they will both be deeply, deeply missed. So thank you both.
Karen was a co-teacher with me a couple of years, so, and I know she's worked at like every building, so.
Sure has.
Huh?
She sure has and she will really be missed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Eva Wayne, a school psychologist from the district, effective the close of business on June twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three as per document ninety-two over twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? That's also a name that, you know.
Yeah, it's been here for many years.
She's been there for a long time. I know they're going to miss her.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Scott Connell to the probationary appointment of a cleaner effective October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks through October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at the operations department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools as the board appoints Narida Bevalacqua to a four-year probationary term as teaching assistant commencing on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two and terminating on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-six in the teaching assistant tenure area on step three of the CSEA salary schedule in accordance with PVCSD policy ninety-two fifty. Ms. Bevalacqua holds teaching assistant level one certification. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Cheryl Constantino to a probationary appointment of school monitor effective October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks through October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four special education district plan as per document number eighty-seven slash twenty-three attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? Natalie, it's a two-year thing?
Two years.
We don't have to do it every, so we renew it every two years?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint the K-12 Comprehensive School Counseling Program 2022-24 District Plan as per document number 88-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the rec, resolved, the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education cast their vote for candidate Cheryl Brady as a New York State School Board Association Area 10 Director.
Second.
Questions or comments? We voted for Cheryl before. We nominated her. Now I'm gonna vote again. Both, well, I mean, I'm always pleased that people want to step forward. I've seen Cheryl at like every single thing that I've been to in the last three or four years. She's very active and I think she'll do a really good job as director.
And we're taking this vote again because the person who was elected lost their seat and they couldn't hold the seat without having a regular seat.
That had to be a board member in order to hold the seat, correct. So they were not reelected as a board member. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Maureen, do you have that, the vote thing? Okay, alright. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any topic.
My name is Miranda Zaki. I have an eighth grader and a kindergartner. So first and foremost, I want to thank our school and our yearbook committee for not putting political garbage in the 2022 yearbook. Thank you and no, I'll never forget 2021. Second, I want to mention, I think it was like, is this a lot? Like a couple weeks ago, a parent called me and her spicy little meatball son, Rocco Scroca, came home all excited after school and he said, "Mom, the day before this happened, he got hurt in football." And he came home so excited in the evening. He said, "Mom, Dr. Luft came to make sure I was okay in class." That says a couple of things to us as parents. First of all, the humanism is number one.
I'm also his football coach, so he might blame me for him getting hurt.
Well, it was really, really nice that you went in to find him the next day and make sure he was okay. They were all good kids. Every last kid in this school district is a good kid. The last thing that needs to be emphasized is, can I move this? Is CRT and DEI stuff. The board of ed, the transparency must be recognized as important. While we are emphasizing teaching to notice differences, we are 100% leaving out the most important aspects, the aspects of learning to accept and love. It's a very simple concept. It's one word that we can use to express. It's called similarities. These kids, for the most part, all get along and love each other for simple similarities, albeit sports, hobbies, but one thing for sure is caring. For years, I heard kids talk about a child that I actually loved since I pulled the tick off his neck after a school field trip in a doorway. And he looked up at me and said, "Thank you, Mrs. Gritz." I hate those things when kids tell me certain things. This kid is actually a great kid. Regardless of what teachers and students think or say, this summer, he was at a birthday party at our school park and he was standing on the other side of the fence while 30 kids were playing. I said, "You know what, sweet pea? You gotta come with me. You gotta be a spicy meatball." I brought him in the basketball court. They are all now friends and he is part of these kids, their little, you know, thing that they have going on, all these kids. The following week, I invited him for a pool and pizza party at our house. He came. It was an awesome afternoon for all the kids that were there. We talked and one thing he said to me was, "My teachers don't like me." And I looked at this child and we talked about that and I said, "We gotta change that this year. I will never use a child's name without speaking to a child first and I will never use a child's name that doesn't want me to." But this kid became friends with all these other kids because of similarities. They are kids. They need to be kids with proper direction of morals, values, and beliefs. If we cannot accept their similarities, we cannot love their differences. Just like adults, you didn't marry your husband or your wife because you had nothing in common. It's the same kind of concept with these kids. They all have a brain, they all have skin, they all have organs, and they all have a heart. As long as they are not blue, yellow, gray, red, and green, nothing else in skin color matters. I cannot tell you, they all need love, understanding, fun, and education, and most of all, safety. It is 100% the similarities that open the door to loving their differences. We stress on the differences and the concept fails to start the process of love and acceptance. It destroys it. It separates humanism. But like the force of unions to counteract unity, we separate people. We pin them against each other, smiling through it in fake worlds of everything. It's amazing. Nothing is all rainbows and nothing is all perfectly amazing. We walk around, some of us with smiles on our faces all day long. It's hidden. The bottom is hitting. It's up to us how we rebuild their worlds. Attempting division and conquering unity to take control is evil and destructive, especially to our children's future. I don't want my child distinguishing skin color unless there's a medical reason to do so. I want my children seeing the human beings. We need unity, not division, and we need complete transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, Miranda.
Any other comments in public? Okay, I'd like, uh...
Upcoming meetings.
Oh, upcoming.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th. That's the meeting that was moved from Thursday to Tuesday. Our presentations will be our high school opening and our athletics update. Following that, we have a meeting on November 17th. The presentations scheduled are buildings and grounds and technology. And then our meeting in December is scheduled for December 15th and that'll be our pupil personnel update.
Can I say again? I would really love an arts presentation.
Yeah. That was very nice. I'm glad she offered to come and speak with us.
We got it on the list. Now we just need time for it.
Okay. Board member, comments on any topic?
I have something to say. I was glad to see upwards of 15 of our teachers here at a meeting. It's about 15 more than we ever see. It's disappointing they were all here for, I don't know what reason, as opposed to coming to support our students and on a regular basis to support our meeting and our community. So I'm glad they were here. Don't really understand why they were here, other than to share their colorful shirts, but I hope that we'll see more of them for the right reasons.
I attended the open house or back to school night event at the high school and it was, it was really impressive. A lot of parents were there, very positive comments. I spoke to a lot of the parents, a lot of the staff members. They had their student assistants showing the, you know, the parents where to go. It really went very well and Mr. Mello, he was a great host. He was standing there greeting everybody. I was very impressed. It was a good evening.
Good. I'm glad you were there for us. Excellent. Anything else?
Is there a student rep on our DEI committee?
We don't have a student on, um... Huh?
Sorry, we do not have a student rep on this time. There's been lots of conversations about it, but it's, we want to make sure we have the right opportunity for the right student and not putting students in positions where they're not comfortable being part of other conversations. If that makes sense.
True, but it is the plan if the right student is found.
I think if it's, when we start having student-centric conversations, which are not happening at this time, I think that would be the opportunity to then involve students. And there's a myriad of ways in which we can get student input on what those are. Like we got student feedback when we were developing our priorities, our focus areas, so we got student feedback for that. But as I had mentioned before, there's not really, our goals for this year are about parent engagement, teacher resources, and then really offering learning opportunities for students. So it's nothing that necessarily is directly impacting students, certainly not in a curriculum or academic.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like a resolution to convene an executive session.
For the matter of one collective negotiation pursuant to Article 14 of Civil Service Law and Taylor Law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
There will be no business conducted afterwards. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.